Just wanted to see if you were ready first. Hold on, Paul. All right. It is 6:30. We will call the January 19th Planning and Zoning Commission to order. All right. Roll call. Brooks.
Here.
Chuck.
President.
Brian.
President.
Thomas. Melissa.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
We have a quorum. Item number three, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 5th meeting. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is open for public comments. If you would like to address the commission, you can do so now. If you do have something on the agenda, we ask that you just wait for that. Anyone? No one? All these people? Nobody? Okay. Item number six. A home occupation permit application for 1504 West Riverbend Circle. That is... Caitlin? Come on up. If you could just push the button on the podium, the one that says press to talk, and let us know what you'd like to do. There it is.
Okay. I would like to open an in-home daycare in my house.
Could you just state your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Caitlin Odie, 1504 West Riverbend Circle.
Thank you. An in-home daycare.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody up here have any questions?
We have not... I have not received any comments from neighbors. I sent out the 300-foot notices, have heard nothing back.
I just remind you guys to use your microphones.
Thank you.
I have a few questions.
Yep.
What part of your home will be used?
Almost my entire basement.
Your basement?
Yep.
Second question. Does your basement have egress windows? Windows that...
It's a walkout.
Okay.
Yes.
For the safety for the kids.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there is actually three exits in the basement to go outside.
I noticed on the application, I didn't see... Paul, have you been over there yet?
Yes, sir. It's a relatively new-built house. I've been there many times for the final inspections.
Okay. Okay, that's my question.
Awesome. Shut that off. Anybody else? Any questions? Anybody else have any comments? Go ahead, Brian.
I have no issue with this, other than if we make a motion, I'd like to see a condition that no children outside till the fence is installed.
Yeah. Hopefully by April-ish.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve with the condition...
Did we want to see if we have?
I did, I asked.
Okay.
There you go.
No one's here for it? Okay.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve the home occupation with the stated additions. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
Have fun, enjoy the kids. Item number seven, preliminary plans for Chestnut Ridge addition. Let's see here. Come on up. If you could just give yours name and address for the record, that would be wonderful.
Nick Van Overschild, 2604 West Bedderett Street, Sioux Falls. With Van Overschild Companies and Chestnut Ridge Development. So we're here with... You guys have seen Chestnut Ridge conceptually. We're here now with our preliminary plans. Looking for approval on infrastructure preliminary plans and then our petition on East Side Trunk Line?
Yes and no. So if you remember, the process is they submitted the concept plan to P&amp;Z Board and to City Council, just for informational purposes. This is the preliminary plan, so this would be the last time you would see it. But this does not mean that all the details are in there. So after this, if it's approved by this commission, it goes to City Council for approval. If approved by City Council, then we can start working on the development engineering plans. So when you look at this, you're mostly approving the general concept of it as far as street names, lot sizes, zoning, and the general layout of the utilities. So things like the fire hydrants are shown on there. Those fire hydrants could move around a little bit. Just because it's approved on the preliminary plans doesn't mean that it's stuck right there in that location. That location could change with the development engineering plans. Same with some of the sewers going to be upsized yet, so the sizes of those utilities might change. And then they're going to add a little bit more for stormwater drainage, so... Preliminary plans are not every little detail, but you're really looking at the lots, the street names, and the zoning.
Okay.
The petition would be in front of City Council and not in front of this board.
Okay, okay.
For the East Side Sewer Trunk? Okay. All right, anybody got any questions for him? Go ahead, Brian.
I got a few questions and a few comments. I guess first one maybe for staff. Stormwater detention is not required on parcel in size?
So we have our regional detention time downstream.
Okay.
So part of that will have to be modified a little bit to help out this development. As it sits now, it does have enough capacity for this whole development. It kind of depends on future development around there and then whatever would happen on the north side of Redwood too.
So is that an issue of first come, first served gets the benefit of the of the city's stormwater detention? I mean, the adjacent lots? If it gets utilized?
A lot of that's paid for with development fees.
Okay.
So as they're getting flats and building permits, that sort of thing, that's kind of what reverts the city to that.
Okay. I guess my next question. Some of the lots are along that south border are reliant upon a road that is half on your parcel, half on someone else's parcel.
Yep. You're talking East Chestnut Trail where it comes in with John Burtman to the south?
That, and then it stops at the school's property?
Yeah.
Is there a specific reason that that does not carry through?
The biggest reason was, we went back and forth with the school on that. We've been working closely with them on this whole thing. And really what it was is not having a raceway, so to speak, run through the north side of the school, south side of our development with the kids and the children. And then it comes down to really their layout and how they're going to be laying out the school as far as where the playground and that is going to sit on their site and their egress and entrances on the school site layout.
I mean, as long as you're working with the school on that. And I don't know the logistics of how that works when they put a street in that's half on their property, half on someone else's property. That's between you developers and the city, but...
Yeah, we will be entering into like a private developers agreement between ourselves, Burtman, and then the school district.
Okay. My other comment is related to the, kind of that northwest quadrant. In our long-range plan, which we as a zoning board are required to follow, we had identified that area as a business area. And in this layout, you're identifying that as what we call R1.
Yeah.
Would you like to address that?
I think when we talked through things conceptually, that came up, and I think we all kind of agreed a lot of the business stuff would be down on Split Rock, some of the new stuff happening out on the I-90, the new interchange there in that area. And I guess some of it maybe comes into play with the... You know, just what the school's looking for, obviously with rooftops and things like that, so...
I guess this board has seen a lot of controversy, as well as City Council, with housing going in first, and then the businesses that need to come in, that people want, that need to come in and support those residents. And then we're stuck with a lot of unhappy homeowners.
True.
And so the long-range, like I said, the long-range plan had identified that intersection of Chestnut and Redwood to be a, you know, a commercial development, and we're talking about this new neighborhood business development, you know? So I'm a little cautious about putting, you know, especially with, it looks like R1, possibly even some R3 in the other areas of this, and then we put the nicer homes up in that corner at the busy intersection, which is probably more suited long-range to be in, you know, maybe some strip malls, maybe a gas station, things that are going to support that neighborhood.
How many homes are you looking at building here?
I believe it's down to, when this first came through conceptually, it was more dense than it is now. A lot of the lots weren't meeting the minimum as far as lot width and things like that, and then the cul-de-sac lots got larger. I believe it's 229 total right now.
229 house lots?
Yeah.
Tammy? Can you tell me how many... It's probably, it's a bad question, but can you tell me how many houses are like between Casey's and Robert Bennett's? I mean, is it 220? Is it 500? Is it 700? You get 16 seconds. Type fast. Does anybody else have any questions? For Nick? Besides Brian? Turn your mic on if you have a question, please.
If there's anything like engineering-wise or questions on the infrastructure, I might have Chad from Stockwell come up and answer those, but... You can go, yeah, go ahead, keep going.
I remember that you are, plan a variety of homes. Variety of living with, you know? So you have... Just to reiterate, for people who haven't heard about it before.
Yeah, yeah.
You have, you're showing some, you're showing a couple of big apartments, is that...
No, in the R3, we want to do some eight-plexes and 12-plex town home-type homes. The R2 will be kind of that intermediate-type range home, and then along the east side are like them Z-Lot Villas. You kind of see they're at...
No basements, that kind?
They can have basements, yeah. Like Harlemme's kind of a good example in Sioux Falls and the Grand Prairie area, along Minnesota, that's got some backing that area. And then really where the R1 comes in, and it's kind of our last and final phase. A big part of that, I guess, being on that, I guess called a main intersection and then the long-range plan to be business, but that's kind of where the peak of the main ridge is at in the development. So there's views up there. And so we're trying to capture, we're trying to capture some of that too, looking to the west over Brandon.
And this, this directly north of where the school is proposed to go?
Yeah, yep, right below the 20-acre school land, it says Future Elementary School there, right below that orange block three. That's for the 20 acres where the...
Yeah, I'm looking at a different part, but yeah, 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 I see it, yeah.
And I know the other day I went through, and I know this isn't for this meeting, but just a comment to make, I took the... Jared Larson with Brandon Valley Schools, he signed the petition for the public improvement on the East Side Trunk Line, and I don't know why, I was kind of nervous to take it to him to sign it, thinking he wouldn't, and he said, "I will run to sign that, not walk." He's like, "That is how serious this is, that this gets in and gets going, because this, this school needs to happen, and it needs to happen quickly." And we got to get east, when I talk about that private developers agreement with ourselves, and we've been in multiple conversations, good conversations with John Burtman and the school, getting that East Chestnut Trail in, get them access to their 20 acres, think that their school started, we can get started. And then John's on board with that stuff too, so...
Have we heard anything from the school about what that looks like, what their lot looks like, any plans, any, anything from the school?
No, they don't want to submit a site plan until we are moving forward on that East Side Sewer, which would be in front of Council on the February 6th meeting.
February 6th, you said?
Yep, next one.
Okay.
They keep telling me, once they have commitment out of the city on the East Side Trunk Line, that's when they'll get there. They'll engage with Architecture Incorporated and Stockwell Engineers to get their, their plans in motion.
I see you have five phases here. Is there any guarantee that you're going to complete all five phases?
A guarantee to complete? I mean, yeah, that'd be the goal. As far as the speed, this is a tentative plan. You know, eight to 10 years, completing a phase about every two years. A lot of that's market-driven on conditions and how quickly stuff sells and gets built out. It might go quicker, it might go a little slower, but yeah, we'll get her, we'll get it all built out.
Which, you're using Chestnut Trail then as your main access end when you first develop?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we're coming in off East Chestnut Trail.
When will Sunshine connect to the other Sunshine to the south?
That's, there's conversations happening right now, kind of behind the scenes on Sunshine. That's all Burtman land there with John. So a couple of things have to happen first there, but we don't have an exact plan or date for that. That's anything that can be brought in front of the city yet.
Do you count?
Little over 1,000.
Oh.
In between those two schools and west of Sioux Boulevard.
Little over 1,000 houses. On Sioux.
I would just echo Brian's concern about our future land use, we got identified for that corner. So... Concerned about that.
I agree. We need to... On the east side of the river, we have to make sure that there's some space for business, especially along major intersections, which that will be. Redwood also is our truck route through town.
Not there. It's a truck route going the other way. It won't be the truck route there.
It won't be? You know that for a fact?
So if we mix in some business, is there going to be some type of commitment out of the city to start looking more seriously at getting Redwood and Chestnut built out? And paved?
It's a great question. No idea.
There's going to be a lot less people out there with residential on gravel roads right now than there's going to be once businesses are out there.
Yep.
Not many people are going to run down and washboard gravel to come to the businesses.
They'll, they'll be there, if they live there, also for the school. They're going to be using those roads for those things anyway.
Does anybody else have any questions for him?
I see that is your last, last phase, and you're looking at about 10 years out.
Eight, 10 years, yeah.
Obviously, it's going to depend on when the school goes in. When the school goes in, that's probably going to develop faster, because people are going, going to want to be right next to that school, especially
Correct.
R1, or sorry, R2 and R3, you know, new families with little kids right next to an elementary school. Is that something you would consider, depending on how development goes in that area with city infrastructure improvements, roadways of...
Some type of, some type of business district out in our, so what do we have? That's our last one, future Phase 5, 2031, tentatively. Absolutely. That's, that's, that's highly worth consideration if, if the city is willing to work with us on Chestnut and Redwood and again, it's going to have to get paved to get that, to be, to be a viable business area.
I invite you to come to our next budget session. I would love nothing more than to pave every street in a 10-mile radius, but...
This is just growing pains out here.
Oh, I know.
The city's going east. I found a deal the other day, I don't remember where I was looking. The Seaside Elementary School was being talked about back in 2005. I mean, we're 18 years later, and here we are, ready to, everybody's ready to pull the trigger and roll. So just growing pains we're all going to have to work with, but we're absolutely willing to sit down and have them conversations on, with what that looks like.
Nowhere on this plan do I see any green area or place for kids? Are you depending on the school to provide?
Honestly, that's where a lot of it's come. Anytime we started to, right around East Pecan Place, there's five lots. It's in Block 8 there, off of Brooks Boulevard. We're looking at doing kind of like a community shelter area, picnic shelter with a park and green space in there. I'm still open to that conversation. It's just kind of busy with streets all around it, and to lose them five lots isn't, isn't the end of the world. But, but that's what, yeah, that's what it went back to is the, you know, the school has a large playground, basketball courts, public area that kids can go use out of development over at the school.
To add, sorry, to add to that conversation on parks. Typically in the city, we do charge a park fee. So every time they plan, they have to pay that fee, and that fee kind of goes into account. And there have been agreements with the school to help fund that playground, like the neighborhood playground as well. So those park discussions have taken place. We typically don't ask the developer to give land for that. What we do is we charge them those development fees, and then if we want to buy land from them, then we buy land from them.
We used to.
Yes.
We, we used to ask for land, and we thought it, years ago, was a better plan to ask for a park fee, and then the park committee actually goes out and acquires land, or buys equipment, or does whatever with that money. Yes.
I do see on the long-range plan that the area just to the east of the school property is identified as a place for a park. And I don't know if that's because that's a low area, probably not buildable, so...
That was donated years ago to the city by the family to be a city park. And yes, it's all drainage area. That's why we quit asking for land donations.
And the city's looking at building a wetland bank through there?
Yes.
Which is why we don't want a whole lot of detention either, because we want that water for our wetland bank. And then we would put in a trail system there for safe routes to school. We have that TAP fund. So we do have a grant of $400,000 to provide a safe routes to school. It was for Redwood and Chestnut, but if the city's not going to build Redwood and Chestnut, we're working with the DOT to see if we can't build an alternative trail somewhere back there. So it would be a park, but it's not going to be a park with playground equipment. It'd be more of like a nature park.
And if that municipal wetland bank goes through, that'd be the first of, the first one in the state of South Dakota, right?
It would be huge.
That's a, that's a big deal.
We'd be the first community to own our own.
Right.
That's a big deal.
The DOT does own a few, but otherwise they're privately owned.
Yeah, thank Tammy for that, that was her idea.
No, I know. When I first heard that, that was...
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a huge...
Because we currently buy wetland credits or some weird thing?
Yeah, and they're, they're expensive.
Yeah.
They're really expensive. Every time we do a project and we, we impact a wetland, we have to mitigate those impacts, and we have to buy credits somewhere else. So they create a different wetland someplace else. So environmentally, it's better if we can keep wetlands in the same place that they are. Plus, it would be a lot cheaper for the city of Brandon, and we would gain an amenity.
There's your question about detention. There you go. Anybody else have any questions for him? Does anybody from the public like to address this? Come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners? Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? Yes. My name is Jim David. I live south of this development. I just want to say thank you for your service as Commissioners. My background is in city government, and so I'm one of those nerds that enjoys following City Council agendas and planning commission agendas, so here I am. My concern really, I should say, I support developing this area, but my concern involves Sunshine Avenue and the preliminary plan that identifies North Sunshine Avenue as a collector. This portion will be 39 feet of width, but in a long-term plan, as we heard, it's to connect South Sunshine, which is currently 36 feet in width, and identify the entire segment as a collector once the farmland ends, or ends up selling the land south of that proposed development. Chestnut will be gravel for a quarter mile to Chestnut Trail, and there is currently no agreement that I'm aware of to pave this portion by the city or the developer. This will drive traffic for the school and the quarter mile of high-density apartments to Sunshine, which is current, which is, would create a continuous mile-long collector street between two arterials, Aspen and Redwood Boulevard. I would urge the Commission to consider splitting off Sunshine so that it's not continuous. Secondly, I just want to say that I do support apartments. I think they are necessary for a community's viability, and I definitely support the school that's north of us. But I do want to, or just want to bring attention to how the current layout is. Is that you have apartments within the development. It's going to be a traffic generator. It's going to generate additional trips. Right now, they're talking about 229 homes. Again, I support apartments, but I, the way the zoning is, I understand this is not a rezon hearing, but the way that they're placing that high-density apartments, I feel it makes more sense to be closer to the arterials so you don't have that, those trips that will already be generated by the school. Now you're adding on apartments. Now they're going to be going through the neighborhood. I think it might make more sense to put the apartments and more of that density closer to your arterials and not with the inner core of a neighborhood that's going through your single-family neighborhoods. And so I just, again, I support this development. I'm excited for this development, but I just think that we need to retool it a bit so we don't create future conflicts. We have a nice blank canvas there, and I think just do it the right way the first time. Thanks.
Thank you. Where'd you go? I have a question for you. So... Yeah, you shouldn't get very far away.
Go ahead.
So Block 1 and 2 of this?
Yeah.
Are you designating those as R1 or R2?
R2.
Those are R2?
Yeah.
And the R1 would be blocks 8 through
10.
10. 12, 6, 12, those? And then 5 and 13 are going to be those Z-shaped lots?
5 and 13 would be the Z-shaped lots, and Block 4, the lots across, directly across from Block 3, those would be four-plexes.
So these are also R2?
2, yeah. And then behind those in Block 3, behind on Brooks Boulevard, to be twin homes.
So do we have a zoning for the Z-shaped lots, or those are R1, or are they a special category?
We don't necessarily have a special zoning for Z-shaped lots. They would be considered a single-family home. Some communities have a special designation as a Z-shaped lot and with a special setback. For example, the city of Hartford in there, either R1, I think it's R1... For example, the city of Hartford in there, either R one, I think it's R one, has Z-shaped lot. Where they explicitly have it as a permitted use because they have a five-foot side yard setback versus a single-family house which has a seven. So they have a particular use, but we do not.
Okay.
It would be a single-family detached dwelling.
And your, your intention with all that R two is to build single-family homes or to build twin homes or?
Single-family homes. Really where the R two comes in is so, in, in the city of Brandon, R one. I believe the minimum lot width is eighty feet, but there's a ton of nice floor plans out there. That are in that fifty-eight foot wide range, fifty-six foot wide range that fit really nicely on a seventy-foot lot. And kinda help keep that, that price point down for a family that's, you know, in that, say. Three fifty to four fifty range, I mean, you start building a five-bedroom, three-bath house on a, on a eighty-foot lot. You're, you're, you're quickly over five hundred approaching, you know, six hundred thousand and so. We're trying to find that balance and that mix to, to get the, the, the families out, out here.
So would you be willing to look at doing R three along Chestnut and push the R two back?
The R three around Chestnut. Yeah, I think some of that would come into play though with like this business zoning now, looking at that, um.
So I asked the question about how many houses are on Sioux.
Yeah.
Because if you'll notice, there isn't a single business on Sioux.
Correct.
There's Casey's on one side, there's Oak Ridge on the other side.
Yep.
Not a single business exists, um, in that development. Is it right? I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, should there be something there? Possibly. I mean, that's one of the discussions we've had a lot about. Is, is whether or not we need to make more space for things like that to exist.
Sure, sure.
Could that kinda development get pushed farther to the east? Maybe, I don't know.
And I guess some of, I mean, for examples, as far as R three by, by schools. That, i- i- it, it, it works, it works well. I mean, right off Highway eleven around Fred Dolly Elementary there. There's multifamily out in the middle, kinda that area. I guess you're seeing it right now, it's two on Highway eleven. Kind of out in the middle of that development, that new one Eagle is doing, and then they got the Ben Rifelson right behind. Brandon School District, that elementary school on Forty-first Street. Costello's got some.
Yep.
Some multifamily out in the center. And that's more dense than what we're looking to do here again. We're looking for some eight plexes and twelve plexes. We're not looking for, for, for three-story high, high-rise. I, and I know R three would, would allow that. Um, but that, that's not our, our, our goal. We just can't build an eight-plex and a twelve-plex within an R two.
No.
We have to go to R three just to get that townhome, that style of townhome in here.
So you're thinking more along the lines of what's across the street from Robert Bennet's or the intermediate school?
Correct.
Those are townhomes.
Correct. Townhome, ta- ta- townhomes just like that. We're not looking for a three, three-four-story forty-eight-plex, thirty-six-plex situation. Again, I'd have no problem doing block three as an R two, but R two won't allow me to build anything more than a four-plex. So we have to go to call it a, a low-density R three if you want, to build a plexes and twelve-plex townhomes.
And, you know, you don't access those townhomes off of Sioux Boulevard. Or Maple.
Correct.
You have to go into the development to get to those. You, yes. And I, I don't know, does it work? Is it ideal? I don't know, maybe.
I think this works really well with that East Chestnut Trail not going through. A- again, really, that R, that R three is just an extension of the school's twenty acres. And part of that, that tract with green space in between.
Um, and it does make sense, by the way, for us to partner with schools for things like parks and whatnot, because why would we build a park a block away from a. School that already has all the equipment in it?
Correct.
Didn't we have an agreement with the school that they would pave up to that East Chestnut so they could access it with their buses? I'm pretty sure when they were in here talking to us, they made some comment like that.
They made a comment about how they didn't need it, but they could possibly work with the township and do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, where, oh, paving up to, going, going north on, on Chestnut, paving that last three hundred feet up to East Chestnut Trail? Yes, that's been talked about.
Because really, the, I mean, the school is driving most of that, period. So.
Yeah.
Did they come here and present to us or counsel? I can't remember. I remember Jared getting up and, and talking to us about this.
It was to counsel during the annexation.
Okay.
They're really leaning on us in Stockwell though, I mean, they, they, they just cut checks for roads and infrastructure and stuff like that. They don't go hire, you know, they don't go to, the school district doesn't go do its own developing and it's, and hire its own general contractors or subs to build that stuff out. So again, we're working collectively, privately with, again, a developer's agreement to get that built as part of our. Infrastructure package and then get reimbursed, just like we are with the city on the upsizing of infrastructure and stuff. For future growth coming out of this development going east someday.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments about this development? Go ahead.
I have no, no qualms about this, this development, but. Oh, I'm sorry, Randy Nelson, I live at sixteen twenty-four East Liberty Circle. I don't have any qualms about the development, but I, um, I do have major concerns that we're. Possibly gonna approve developments like this when we don't have the infrastructure like Redwood and Chestnut to do it. It's my understanding that there's no plan to do anything with Redwood. And, uh, that's, how do you develop without that? It's, uh, the Redwood Ranch and that type of thing, that was held up because, because Redwood can't handle it. Or that's one of the reasons. And, uh, it's just something that really has to be thought about. There needs to be a plan. That's all I got. Oh, one other thing. Is the east side trunk gonna go up Sunshine or how's that gonna go?
No, it pretty much follows the drainage way that's there now and then it goes all the way up to Redwood.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Let me show you on the map.
Okay.
The master of the big board. Where are you? Just like that.
Here, it's Sunshine, right here. So we have a low station that's down here. Okay, so it kinda winds back around here behind these cul-de-sacs right now. So it serves as this area. And what we'll do is we'll follow that channel all the way up and up to Redwood. And that's where it'll stop.
And then the school land is, her hand is of the school land and the eighties just north of that. Right out of the southeast corner, right, right where her fingers are.
The what?
The collector street.
Love to.
So, the city of Brandon's never had a transportation plan before. So as these, as developments come in, it's kind of a piece by piece, there's really no big plan. We try to have arterials every mile and then we really wanna have those collectors, kind of, you know, every quarter mile, every half mile type of thing. So when you look at like the core area of town, just for a good example, if you look up here. So between Sioux and Split Rock, you have Pass Flower that you can kinda go through, right? It's windy, but that would have to be our collector street. And then over here, we would have Maple. Now, we do get some complaints up here that Maple doesn't go right to Redwood. You know, you have to turn and go through a few intersections there, which it is helpful because it slows people down a little bit. We don't wanna race track. And when you look at our design standards right now, we've been working on that quite a bit. And I do hope to put those in front of council on February sixth as kind of a draft. Only because we do follow the city of Sioux Falls, but when you look at their definitions for an arterial road. There's a very much like a forty-first street or twenty-sixth street or tenth street, right? We're never going to meet those definitions here in Brandon. So, we're working on trying to raise some of our own definitions. But still keep it as close to city as you can. And so part of the process has been sitting down with HDR's engineers. And their traffic engineers and look through where we need collector streets, where arterial streets would be. Um, and then where the local streets would be. So if you look at the east side of town here. It is a mile between Chestnut and what I call Beaver Valley Church, okay? We need some kind of a connection in between there. And east of Sunrise Estates, we have Bethany Meadows. And then we also have some other development here, so it makes it really tricky to try to put a through street somewhere in there. I think that it could probably go in here eventually when this develops and we get something going. But it would be nice to have one on the west side of that drainage channel too. And we don't wanna cross that drainage channel because then we'd have bridges and that sort of thing and that adds a lot of cost. So to have Sunshine connect through there, um, the existing Sunshine. It is a little bit smaller than what we would want, right? So it is gonna slow traffic down a little bit, but really it's only a foot and a half on each side and so it's still gonna hold the same amount of traffic. Berkman's area is still up in the air, so we don't really know how that's going to develop. But eventually we would want that connection to go all the way through. And so that's why we labeled it as a connector street. I don't think it, I don't think that collector street is gonna be the same definition of what you've seen in Sioux Falls. But we're still kinda working through those and that's why we identified that on the preliminary.
So what would, what would Sioux Falls define Aspen Boulevard as?
You know, I think it's based more on traffic count.
Okay.
Chad, I would think that would be a collector street.
Where's Aspen?
This one. Chad, so do you engineer in Sioux Falls?
You know, that'd probably be, what's it carry? You know, if it, is it ten thousand?
Twenty-nine hundred. So Aspen carries about twenty-nine hundred, Redwood, which we're talking about right now, carries seven hundred.
Oh, you can, you can.
So an arterial is ten thousand?
On a two-lane, I mean, just a two-lane road, paved road, you can, you know, if you have. Turn lanes and maybe at intersections, you can carry seven, eight thousand cars a day on a two-lane road.
Seven or eight thousand?
Yes. So you, you know, like, uh, Bonson Avenue in Sioux Falls, you know, is considered a collector and it probably carries. Five, six, seven thousand cars a day. And it's a, I mean, it's a, it's just two lanes with parking on each side.
Yeah, 'cause we don't even allow for parking on Aspen and it only carries twenty-nine hundred a day.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we, in Sioux Falls, you know, uh, till the road gets, you know, ten thousand. I mean, usually it's a lane in each direction can handle it. As long as you have, the intersections have turn lanes. And maybe you have a center turn lane at, at the, at the collector streets or at the busy intersection. So people can get in and get out of that left turn lane so people can keep going through.
Tammy, do we have a road that gets ten thousand cars a day?
Holly.
The Split Rock?
Yeah, I don't know that offhand, but probably. I, yeah, they do, 'cause that's planned to be a five-lane all the way out to Sioux Falls.
So just, for my knowledge, how much does like Minnesota Avenue carry a day?
Well, I can tell you that, uh, the busiest road in Sioux Falls is.
Yes.
Is the portion of Twelve Street, uh, right around I twenty-nine. And the reason that is, is because it's, it's three lanes.
Okay.
So this is like from where, where Gates Brothers used to be and things like that. But it's, there's three lanes in each direction, there's a median. And so, you know, it's just, it's built to carry traffic. And so that road, um. Minnesota's probably in that twenty-five thousand cars a day. I mean, thirty, a couple years ago, Twelve Street, that section was probably thirty-eight thousand cars a day.
Okay.
That, and that'd be probably the highest that you would see.
Okay.
And that's a, I mean, it's a, it's a lot of traffic.
It is a lot of traffic. I mean, the only street we have that even resembles that is Split Rock. Uh, but that's actually a state highway, so it's not really our road. But, um, Holly would be built to what you would consider a collector and carry, you know, fifteen thousand cars a day, which we do have.
When we say collector street, it's not the same as a Sioux Falls collector street.
Right.
But we still want that connection through there.
You know, Bonson runs from Fifty-seventh to Tenth Street and it's a straight shot. And, I mean, it can turn into a racetrack. And so the tendency now is to.
Put in curves?
You know, let's not have these, we don't want this road to go, you know, and arterials can go on the mile collector, they can go for miles. But the collectors, you know, you wanna, uh, you wanna, they just wanna be a little bit, a little bit larger than the residential. And, and people, you know, they, most of the time I think people go, I do live on a collector, so I do expect. There's gonna be a little bit more traffic, but, you know, with, with Brandon, I mean, you know, you narrow these roads up. And, and that does a lot, I think, to slow people down. And people drive, um, they drive at the speed they feel comfortable in. And so if you got out on Russell Street, that's like a runway. I mean, you could, you could go eighty miles an hour down there and people do speed. But it's, it's wide open, they feel comfortable. But, you know, in these city streets where you, you know, you have cars parked. Um, and the roads are a little bit narrower, it, uh, it does slow people down.
We, we had a lot of these discussions when we rebuilt our infrastructure because we did just that, sort of on purpose.
And it's not so much, I think, you know, it's, the traffic volumes are one thing, but it's also, a lot of times it's the speed. And if you can, you know, you can make the driver feel a little uncomfortable when things are a little bit narrower, they slow down.
Thank you, by the way, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yes. All right, go ahead.
Vicki David, twenty-eight oh nine, East Sunflower Circle. Um, couple things. One, um, I understand we're not Sioux Falls yet. And I don't think we'll ever be completely them, but I think a lot of problems, I was on council for three years, some of you may know that or some of you may not. Um, but our, I think part of our problem was we weren't trying to project for the future and understand certain things will happen. Um, and so, yeah, we might never carry as many cars as what Sioux Falls does, the traffic flow. But it doesn't mean we can't think that way and know that Aspen will be a future arterial. I drive that every day. Um, if you go on Sunshine Avenue, there is no turning lane, so a good point they brought up that you should need a turning lane. And the fact that it's very poor lit, it was brought up at a council meeting probably a year ago by Jack Parlant and myself, it's very poor lit. Um, and if that's gonna be, for me, I'm seeing, that's our main route, because as was stated here before. We don't have Redwood or Chestnut paved. And, and so that's gonna be the main way for school and buses and especially Valleys closing. So everyone from Valley's gonna come that way to go and they're gonna turn on Sunshine, which is a residential street. The other thing, Tammy mentioned that, yeah, it's a collector street, but that's a mile long there. Everything, all the other examples you have are not a mile, this is a long collector street. As what, in my fear is it's gonna be the way into the school. When it should be, Chestnut's built for that, Redwood's built for that. Um, and Tim, you, we were sitting on there, I know the votes weren't there for annexation. But I know that study is good for eighteen months, so I think there's still months left. And I s- I truly believe there's a way to figure out what we can do to help if, if your business. I think that would be great on that corner and I think it's a lot easier because we know how it is trying to put apartment complexes in, right? And I think if, if we have a residential and then putting apartments and, and doing it right the first time. But I feel like there's a. But I feel like there's a way that we could work and do something, think outside the box. I know, I've, I've been the budget meeting, Tim, I know the money, I know it's not, but I feel like we're Brandon, we're good, right? We have a lot of smart people here and I feel like there's a way that we could try to figure out somehow to make that work. Um, but I just think there's a things I just want to consider with the Sunshine Avenue, which, like I said, I understand that, but it's just not equipped to be and hold school traffic on it.
So do we have plans to widen Sixth Street when we do the core?
Yes, I would like to make that a Collector Street as well.
Because that also carries a bunch of school traffic.
Yes.
Not, not intentionally and not purposefully, but it just does because it goes straight through and there's a stop sign or a traffic light there.
Right, so it would be a mile between Aspen and Redwood. And we do have Holly in there that connects it through that half mile. Where here on the east side, it's really difficult to do that because we have that drainage through the middle of it. So unless we want to spend millions of dollars on a bridge, that connection just isn't there.
No, I know, but the school doesn't run buses down Sixth Street?
I think for the most part they use Fourth Street. I'm not sure. They seem to change that.
Okay.
Um, we, we all know we're going to have a lot of traffic congestion. There is going to be some growing pains on the east side. With the new school, all the timing is still when we, when the DOT plans to remove the interchange. So there's going to be construction there.
Aren't they going to do that at the same time they're building the school?
Yep. Twenty-four and twenty-five is the plan right now for construction. So as, as they're coming from Valley, I would expect some of them are going to turn around, go back east and then take the Valley Springs exit instead of trying to go all the way to Veterans. Our interchange will still be open during construction, but it's still construction.
It won't be fully operational though. Okay. Melissa, do you have something? It's the one with the stoplights on. It's the stoplight at the middle school is Sixth Street. Sixth Avenue. There we go. Okay.
I, I guess I'm not understanding the issue that's being brought up about Sunshine. Um, yeah, Chestnut's not going to be done in a year, two years. Um, maybe it will, maybe with this tax revenue for, with a bunch of new houses coming in, um, it can get done. But we gotta, we gotta think long-term and not just the short-term of before Chestnut gets paved.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not going to get hung up about Sunshine for, if it even ever does connect before Chestnut gets paved. I mean, that's, that's an assumption that it's going to connect on the south end to the north end. And that, that area is going to get developed in between there.
Okay.
It's also in the transportation plan as a recommendation to improve Sunshine and Aspen. When I first started four years ago, almost five years ago, the county asked for that right away. So it has kind of been on the radar. We just haven't been able to do that yet. The street lights, um, we have talked about that before. I should put together a cost estimate on that. Some of that is because half of Aspen is still county road. So until that's really improved and turned over to the city, we don't typically put in all the street lights. It's the same thing with, uh, Holly Boulevard and the street in between Sandstone and the bridge.
So where does Aspen stop in city limits? Before the bridge, after the bridge, by the golf course?
So the bridge is still in the county, so.
So it's not actually a city road until you get over the bridge?
Yeah, the city actually owns it after the bridge. There's like a little bit of an asphalt area and then it goes to concrete. Where it goes to concrete, that's where the city owns it.
And so the rest of that is a county road?
Yes, and now half of it's city, half of it's county.
Huh?
Which makes it really difficult for maintenance.
It's a, it's a state highway. Isn't the state going to have to say on how the intersection goes at Sunshine and Aspen?
It's not a state highway. It's a county highway.
So Split Rock's a state highway.
Yes.
Um, Holly Boulevard becomes a county road where? After the bridge?
Hmm, yeah. So it's city up until the bridge and goes county to almost Sandstone. Back to city until you get past, uh, Arbor Ridge Road or right now Lancer.
Yep.
And then it goes back to county for a while and then it goes.
It's a state highway at Highway one hundred.
It was then state, but now I think the city of Sioux Falls has taken it over.
And then it's Sioux Falls after that.
Right.
One stretch of rant. Surprising it ever gets snow moved on it.
We are working on putting together a corridor study and that's kind of a joint project between city of Sioux Falls, us and Minnehaha County. So hopefully we can get some of that figured out through that corridor study.
Okay.
It's a lot of planning.
Sounds like we have a lot of regional planning to do with Sioux Falls in hand. Since you guys are in the room, I figured I might as well say it. Yes. Does anybody else have any questions for the developer? Anybody have any other questions or comments for the commission? Um, what would you like from us?
So we would need a formal approval if you want to approve the plans as-is. If you would like them to look at general business, then it's our whole.
If we approve the plans as-is and they make a decision that they would like to look that direction in five or six years, would they have to come in for a rezone?
Yes.
But they would not have to, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily matter if we approved these plans or not with those future uses.
So if you approve these plans as-is, when they annex into city limits, that's what the zoning will be?
Yep. That's what the zoning will be, but they can always change zoning.
Correct. Yep.
So you're saying if we approve these plans, the, the zoning that they show goes with it?
Yes.
Hmm.
And I'm open to rezone down the road on future phase five, eight years down the road when we get to that point, but.
I don't know if you've been paying attention, but we haven't exactly had a lot of fun with rezones in town lately.
Well, yeah. I don't know. There, there'd have to be some quick, there'd be some quick commitments on Redwood and Chestnut. I don't see that happening either, so.
If you can find ten million bucks, the city would gladly pay them.
I don't know why you guys are trying to build it all out with complete infrastructure on the front end.
Um, or the other thing is you can go to a township meeting.
Yeah.
So if we approve this tonight and want here, uh, block eight, nine, and ten to be business district, how do you guys feel about that?
Oh, what do I know? Block eight, nine, and ten? I, I mean, that's, that is a lot.
Well, that corner, maybe not the whole thing, but the corner, like we talked about, that intersection, how do you feel about that?
I mean, we've had, we've had, we've had churches interested in being in this eighty. We've had, um, daycares interested in being in this eighty. But as far as strip malls, gas stations, that conversation being in this eighty, there's been zero of that.
Do we allow for daycares in R-one besides in-home daycare centers in R-one? We don't allow for daycare centers. We only allow for in-home daycares if I remember correctly. We do allow for churches in R-one.
Yeah. Not the whole thing.
In the R-one district, I do not see daycare as a permitted use. Permitted use is our single-family detached dwelling, house of worship, library, school, public park, neighborhood utility, electrical substation. Conditional uses are single-family attached up to two, group home, and public utility facility.
We've had places of worship.
There you go.
Contact us, a couple of those and that's, uh, that's about it. That would fit that category.
So I guess it's up to you guys. If you would like to see something different, when would you like, when is your plan to start this development, by the way?
Uh, we'd start grading, uh, on phase one this, this summer.
The summer.
School wants to break ground spring of twenty-twenty-four. So we need to have East Chestnut Trail in for them to get access to the school because they need to be open August of twenty-twenty-five. And they need about fifteen, sixteen months for construction.
Have we had any conversations with the school about any of this? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they're just waiting on us for our supermain project.
Okay.
What's that? No, no, it's not annexed in at this time.
So it's up to you guys. Do you want to recommend to city council that you approve these plans?
I'm not comfortable with the northwest corner.
Okay.
What if we made your block ten our business district? I mean, we have a new district that we're developing, so.
What's it called? What, Brian, you had said a new district.
Neighborhood business?
Neighborhood business.
Yep.
In fact, it's at the end of our.
If you would like to stick around, it's up next.
I do. I want to hear what neighborhood business is and.
I guess that's what I was thinking for block ten.
I'd, I'd be, uh, we'll stick around and listen on neighborhood business. I'd be interested in, in that conversation on block ten, but eight, nine, and ten, that's a, that's a large area. And like I said, that, that ridge is really right peaked at blocks eight and nine for, again, the, the views we're looking at, that residential west over Brandon. Okay. I'm open to that.
So, I guess maybe what I would suggest would be to, if they came back next meeting and showed a portion of that to be, they can't really call it neighborhood business.
We don't, we don't have one yet.
As general business, um, down the road, ten years down the road, when you go to develop that, if this area has not developed, you could always come back and rezone it to.
Residential.
R-one, R-two.
Correct. I agree. I agree.
It's always easier to go down than it is up when it comes to zoning.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be easy to take it back to an R-one from a general business than when we take it from an R-one to a general business.
Is that something you would consider, maybe making a little revision here and.
Absolutely.
In a couple of weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So do we have to, would we do ask for continuation?
Um, no, it, I mean, I, I don't know. We would probably deny the one as is.
Hold on, Chad probably wants to talk about infrastructure.
Yes.
I just have.
Go ahead.
Come on up.
Uh, Chad Heevia with Stockwell Engineers. So when you guys are talking about that corner, what are, what are you envisioning in this, in your master plan or? It, what do you envision that corner looking like? Is it a?
So I think the map that he was referencing was, was one that we put together years ago where we just identified corners um, and tried to do some buffering from the corners back into developments, right? Putting in general business or commercial and buffering it back through that way. And so this corner was identified as one that could potentially have those, that kind of buffering put into it. Um, this obviously is not that. Um, this is R-one. Now, does it have to be that? I don't know.
I just, when I think about, you know, like what's happening out by the other Brandon school, the schools come and then it's houses.
Yep.
And what you're seeing, I think, as this, as these cities grow, I mean, the, the days of having gas stations on corners are, are going away because they do generate a lot of traffic. And they're, and so if you look in Sioux Falls, as Sioux Falls is growing, I mean, you see a lot of those corners like that are, maybe it's a car lot that generates not a lot of traffic. But you're seeing that the gas stations and different things are going farther away from those intersections just because there's always a median there and they don't have, you know, it's a right in, right out. And so I just.
We've been working on something we're calling a neighborhood business district, which is sort of like a scaled-down version of general business. Um, certain things are not allowed, certain properties, certain businesses are not allowed. So, um, we've been, one of the things that we recognize or read about is that people do enjoy a pedestrian sort of lifestyle. So I mean, you, if you don't have anything to walk to, so this would be an opportunity to give some people something to walk to. I mean, like I said, I pointed out that there were a thousand houses between Casey's and Robert Bennett's and there's nothing to walk to, right? Um, it doesn't necessarily, and, and granted, I'm not a young man, but younger people than me seem to be driving this, not me. So they want to move into neighborhoods where they have something that they can do. That's why you see downtown areas so popular. That's why, I mean, people are seeking that stuff out. So we're trying to make accommodations for that. We don't have it yet because that's the next item on our agenda. So, uh, you know, we didn't have this neighborhood business district when we had this map, so we just identified it as general business.
And I think the point I'm trying to make is that a lot of times you see the gas stations maybe going at like, uh.
Yeah.
At, at Brooks Boulevard.
I, I would think that they would be out on Aspen, um, something that would be a bigger street. Some, something like that is where they would locate, not, not in a neighborhood like this.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I probably misspoke when I said gas stations because we don't allow that in our neighborhood business.
No.
It's going to be things like Caribou Coffee, uh, Dollar General.
Okay.
Stuff like that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so. Sure.
So neighborhood business is starting tonight. How?
Oh, no, we started three months ago.
Well, I'm just curious how, how close, you know, obviously we want to get phase one going. That's important for the school. The first twenty-two acres is phase one in the south end of this development. Neighborhood business sounds something like that I would be interested in. Uh, when you talk walkable and Caribou Coffees and stuff like that, that, that type of district intrigues me. Again, we're getting hung up on something that's eight, ten years out and the master plan of the eighty acres.
So what we're trying to prevent with that is you coming back for a rezone in ten years or eight years or five years. And then the people who have built houses here come in and are mad because you want to put businesses in their backyard.
Sure.
So if we can do this.
So we'd put a blip in there right now, block ten is general business, come back to the next planning and zoning meeting and then revisit again.
So that would be two weeks. So we would move the approval back two weeks.
Okay.
Or three weeks. I don't know. Three weeks? Three weeks. There we go.
I think that would open up options because then, yeah, we were talked about how if it came to pass that a change would be desired down the line. You had to turn general business to a residential, but would be probably more palatable to.
What is that?
People already living there, but the same, by the same token, a change of general business to neighborhood business should also be more palatable. Thing if it's, and I, I like the idea of getting it designated to general business now to set that expectation, yeah.
So what council meeting would that push us back to for date when we had petitioned for our east side trunk line? Around end of February now instead of February sixth?
It would be February twenty-first.
Okay.
Which would be a Tuesday.
Yeah, let's do that.
Could we approve it with that recommended change or does it have to be penciled out?
Could they approve, could they? I think let us look at it closer and come back in two weeks with block ten with a general business discussion.
Like that little dogleg section.
Yep.
Block ten.
Yeah, I would much rather it be done in on paper when we approve it versus approving it with stipulations that are not necessarily written down.
Or even, you know, as you revise it, maybe block nine extends over to Chestnut. And just that strip along, along Redwood.
Something.
Okay.
I like the dogleg. I, you know, but.
The nice thing about the dogleg is then it gets you away from the intersection for access points.
All right, yeah, well, uh.
So then your recommendation, Tammy, Patrick, somebody who's better at this than me, um, would be to deny this and then have them come back because we don't want to table something. That just seems weird. So we can, we can deny this plan as it exists, but with the understanding that you would be back in three weeks when we reconvene in.
Okay.
Does that sound like a plan?
It, is there a fee? Like what do you have to play, pay?
Is there a fee? Like, would you have to pay a second fee and want to have...
No.
If you want to see, um, neighborhood business written down, it's in the packet, in the binder on the back table. We're gonna be talking about it a little bit, but if you want to go look at that binder, you can, it's back there, isn't it? The binder with the, yeah, our packet, and, and it's all written down in there what the regs are and...
Okay.
Yeah.
We're getting there. Okay, so I would entertain a motion then to, yes, sir.
Tam, Tammy, um, you said the twenty-first? Oh, city council meeting.
It's not for us.
No.
No.
I think the motion would deny this second.
Motion and a second to deny. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, well, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up for discussion, item number eight is the neighborhood business district ordinance draft.
Hopefully, we are close to the end. I know we wanted to come back and talk about off-street parking, but hopefully, this reflects everything we talked about. If not, let me know, and we can... Tweak it a little bit more, but hopefully, as it reads now is as you intend.
Um, page number thirty-six.
So...
In the highlighted area.
That's the only change? I just want to check that.
So, and it adds on and off-street, on and off-sale alcoholic beverage establishments to as conditional uses. There was a... I highlighted the off-street parking stuff we still have to talk about on page thirty-six, but otherwise, that's pretty much it. The one difference on the off-street parking is you wanted a preliminary definition of the mutual access easement, so that's in there, and we'll sync it up with, with Tammy's definition, so hopefully, all the city regs and laws will match up. So, those are the two big changes, the on and off, off-sale, and, and there was the, the size of the dwelling as well. Fifty percent in the general business to twenty-five, I think it was, neighborhood business. For the dwelling. So, it was a different size standard, thirteen hundred versus fifteen, I think, or... Yeah.
Okay.
I think.
Does anybody have any questions for Patrick about this? Anybody have any discussion or items or anything else?
The, uh, the thing I remember that we talked about was hoping to talk about the access aisles within the parking lots when Tammy was here. So...
Okay.
Or if... Yeah.
I thought we did too.
I thought we had that all settled.
What we have left...
We were talking that night that if Tammy were here, we had some questions, but then after that, I thought we had it all settled.
I think we did, actually.
Okay.
Okay.
If, how could we have it settled if we still had questions for Tammy?
We don't. Patrick is brilliant. Patrick figured it all out.
Well, yeah, I know Patrick is brilliant.
You're welcome, Patrick.
Yeah, okay, okay, good, thanks.
Um, one of the things we did come up with is that you could allow for the drainage to be in the setback, so then that would open up for things like, yeah, we, we, we got it figured out. Okay.
The one change in the text of neighborhood business is we would still have to figure out language on page thirty-six for section twelve with, of the NB ordinance, which deals with who approves and sets the standards for the accesses. And you all seem to be in the direction that if Tammy is willing to do it and had some kind of set standard, that you would defer to her.
Correct.
Yes.
Rather than by, all of them by conditional use permit.
You okay with that?
So, the language will be changed to reflect that they will be set and determined by the city engineer.
Okay. So, does anybody else have anything to add to this? Anyone? Nope. So, it sounds like maybe our next meeting, we could do our first reading, or public hearing, I should say. And at that public hearing, we would, we would recommend to send this to council.
You would recommend or recommend that, adopt?
Well, after this much time, I hope we recommend to do it. So, we don't have anything to vote on. We just have... Sounds like this, oh my god, discussion's done.
Unless you wanted to take public comment.
We did. I asked.
Okay.
Well, come on up.
So, I always start with a couple of questions here. So, you're... Six oh one Tamrac. Um, so, is a drugstore, are they, can they sell marijuana?
Pharmacies cannot sell marijuana.
Okay, so this is drugstore now.
If we want to change the term to pharmacy, we can, if that's what you want.
Yes.
So, neither one of them can sell marijuana. Okay, and then...
Um, unless the federal government says it's legal, and then pharmacies can sell whatever they want.
Okay, okay.
But as of right now, no, it may not.
Um, and so then, in the city, um, can there be a, a bar next to a sanctuary?
We, I believe, have footage between houses of worship and alcoholic sales places, yes.
You believe so? Yes.
I don't remember what it is.
Okay. All right, okay, and then, um, you know, I know we've all, all of us have spent a lot of time on this project. You know, a couple of months ago, you guys had verbalized that some of your goals for this neighborhood business zone weren't to include businesses that were low-traffic generators, family-friendly, keeping light, noise, and other pollutions to an absolute minimum. Those objectives seemed like a popular compromise with the citizens. Today, what we're presenting are a lot of high-traffic generators, several options with late-night entertainment, and all, all of the pollution. Um, as an observation, I think the general public might not necessarily agree that a square block of, with no green space, except for a little frame around the edge, is neighborhood-friendly. Um, when people drive by and see a block with three fifteen-thousand-square-foot strip malls with alcohol establishments, tattoo shops, and appliance stores, they might not think of neighborhood-friendly. Um, I understand that you're motivated to get more businesses to Brandon, so there's more revenue generated, and thus, the city can distribute more funds. However, disappointing the customers' confidence in the process is not going to bring more spread, more spending to Brandon businesses. Negative feelings towards said businesses will not support the overall mission of getting more people in the doors. That kind of negativity is hard to overcome. This is compounded by some of the decisions by city leaders in the past that may have been very well-intentioned, but came off not so well-thought-out and received some criticism. I want to present a proposal that would be acceptable to the public and the city board members to present, prevent further breakdown between the taxpayers and the city members. I noticed that the city spent some tax dollars on beautifying Holly Boulevard with some ornamental trees and plants. Maybe we can include some of that, some of those types of decisions in this new zone. Um, so the burden doesn't fall on taxpayers again. Every meeting, green space and water concerns are brought up, and yet, the amount of green space is carved down. We've been watching the carnage in the news of California and their water problems. They have not enough green space for decades, compounded by extensive drought. Now, there's more rain that they can handle, and again, green space would have helped alleviate some of the damage. Over and over again, cities put short-term profits over the safety and needs of citizens. Another loophole that I come across regarding this neighborhood zone, while explaining this to a neighbor down the road, he expressed a scenario that could be exploited. He could knock down the berm that he has in his backyard to have an entrance from Redwood Boulevard. He smokes barbecue as, as a side hustle. His neighbor sells tools out of his truck. That might be interested in doing the same, and the next house is a daycare, all of whom might want entrances from Redwood Boulevard, and might want to add a lot of payment and entrances and disrupt the neighborhood.
Okay, can you talk about the entrances at Redwood?
Yeah, Redwood would be our arterial street. There would not be an entrance or an access to allow a long grid.
I'll maybe address some of the comments that were brought up, uh, about green space. I heard that, like, lost count of how many times. We do have significantly more green space on these, in this neighborhood business as it's proposed. Um, currently, in all of our other business districts, you can park in a front setback. Uh, this one does not allow parking in the front setback. The front setback is the same distance as any residential property, and so, as you look down the street, you're not going to see cars parked in the street. You're not going to see a, the facade of a building out in that setback. That setback is, um, cognizant of the residential character of, of a, of the neighborhood. We're also not allowing parking in side yards. Side yard setbacks are greater than your residential, and so, I guess, I'm confused where you say there's no green space.
Oh, oh, can you, can you come to the podium, please? Sorry.
So, they had the plan last time, just that little frame of green space. I mean, really, so what we're going to get now is three acres?
That, that plan, the plan that you're referring to is not what, doesn't work with what we've got right now.
Oh, okay.
They, they presented two options.
Okay.
The one with the green space around the outside of three lots is not what's in here right now.
Because it's not really enough. Like, it's not enough green space. That plan.
I think when you take it into the scale of a residential property, eh, like I said, the setbacks are no less than a residential property. So, you're, you're twenty-five foot...
You're connecting all of, you know, you're connecting the...
Front yard setback in your front yard, they have to maintain that for any parking or any building or anything like that.
Okay.
They also have to maintain the same minimum rear yard setback that you have against your neighbor. They also have to have a greater side yard setback than what you have between your house and your property line. So, they are actually providing more green space around their parcel than any of the residential neighborhoods that we have right now.
So, you're saying in that three-point-six acres, they're going to have roughly half of that is going to be green space, like, like there would be in a neighborhood? You know, with the house and the driveway and...
I can't tell you what the percentages are, and I don't know how they're going to lay it out. I'm just saying, for every parcel, the setbacks around that parcel...
Yeah.
Are greater than, at least, and/or greater than what you have at your, at your residence. Twenty foot in the back. I don't remember what the side yards were.
Yep.
Twenty-five in the front.
Yep. I, I hear you.
And, and, and that, this is what Brian is saying, I think, and, and more, more emphasis placed on the boundaries with the residential neighborhoods. And then, I think the building sizes are pretty limiting, even if there's s- some things that could be imagined in the uses that are provided with the building size of a maximum of fifteen-thousand-square-feet, but that's, can only be built to thirty-three percent of the buildable, or you'd have to have an acre on... Yeah, you'd have to have an acre to have a fifteen-thousand-square-foot building, and almost half an acre to have a ten-thousand-square-foot building. I know all that's not going to be green space, but, and then combined with the fact that we, I think, have done a lot to protect the boundaries to the residential, would, should lead to a... You know, it's, it's going to somewhat limit the uses just by that, in my mind.
And signage is, uh, more restrictive than it is in general business, too. You won't, you won't see, you know, big, great big tall signs right down on the road, and stuff, smaller signs are required and...
You also mentioned pollution, like light pollution. On fifteen, nine, ten here, it says, uh, on the whole section. The lighting has to be directed towards the building, not towards the residential area. It, uh, there, there's about five, four different things here that protect you from pollution by light. You could have a stronger light on your garage, hanging from your garage than they can have.
Yeah, your, your porch light can shine into your neighbor's windows, but we're not allowing that to happen here in this business.
We're trying to help.
Yeah. So, we're just trying to, and, you know, show some of the things that we are doing, you know, within, we've got to be reasonable, too, so...
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes, Tammy.
Real quick, alcohol sales need to be a hundred yards from a school or a church.
One hundred yards.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, then, I suppose we would, uh, take this at our next meeting for a public hearing.
So, with publication, it probably won't be the public hearing at the next meeting, or probably be the following one, just because it has to show up in the newspaper ten days ahead of time, but...
How many?
But...
How many days?
Ten days.
Okay.
So, that's, depends on when you have to get things to the newspaper than when they actually publish. So, it usually takes, not the next meeting, but the following one. But be sure to check the agenda, just because I can't tell you when the newspaper publishes and when the ten days, and so, I imagine it won't be the next one. It'll probably be the subsequent one, but just be sure to check the agenda.
Even with three weeks?
I would have to check with Melissa when the journal publishes.
As soon as possible. How about that?
You're talking about, uh, February, for Thursday, February, Thursday, February third, probably.
Maybe.
Or sixteenth.
Sweet.
P and Z is the first and third week.
Okay.
We...
Okay, okay. Good enough.
I'm sorry, I'm going to miss, I, I'm having a knee replaced in February, so I'm going to miss...
I didn't give approval for that. We do have to vote on that. Sorry.
They'll drag in.
Is it replaced that day? Like, I'm trying to figure out...
Well, that's what I'm saying. What, so we have to have two public hearings?
So, planning and...
Just like this, we have one public hearing.
Planning and zoning has a public hearing.
And then...
City council does a first and second reading.
We have one, and city council does two.
Correct.
And the first one we could have would, would be...
February sixth.
The second meeting in February.
Second meeting in February, which is one I'll probably miss. But, yeah.
I might.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You, you can...
I need more commitment out of you, Melissa.
Planning and zoning will have a public hearing, and everyone from the public, feel free to come in and speak, or send letters, or however you want to contribute public comments. They will make a recommendation that the city council either adopt this or not adopt this. Hopefully, if they've worked on it, they would recommend it, but who knows? It, it's up to them how they want to vote. Then, the city council will get it either way, and they will hold a public hearing, and you will have a similar opportunity to express opinions to the city council. And should they want to continue it onto a second reading, they will, and at the second reading, they would conceptually vote yea or nay.
There you go. Perfect.
And then, and then, if the city council says...
You're not going to be here.
City council says yes, then it gets published.
Yep.
And then, the public has twenty days to petition.
Yep.
To put it, yeah.
There's a referendum period that's twenty days.
Yeah.
So, at the end of that twenty days, it would be effective.
Assuming there isn't a referendum. Files complaint after twenty days, then it goes into effect.
Correct.
Twenty days after it's published.
So, it's a long process.
City government moves slow. All right, are we done? Oh, Chuck, what? I know, I was with number eight. We done? Okay, item number nine, um, off-street parking definitions draft. Patrick?
So, these are the definitions that were presented the last time with the addition of just a definition for mutual access easement. Tammy, do you have any suggested changes to match up with how you do things? Okay. Does anyone at P and Z have any tweaks they would like to make to these definitions?
I see nothing. So, we'll also do a public hearing on this?
Correct.
Same time?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay.
And at the next meeting, there are a couple of public hearings scheduled for the R2 setback and there's another one, too. So, a lot of public hearings coming up.
Awesome. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? No? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to second adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 7:59.